Meeting to order. Mr. Mejia, if you could start us off by calling a row.
I will. Councilmember Marquise Harris Dawson.
Present.
Councilmember Sedillo is absent. Councilmember Bob Blumenfield.
Blumenfield present.
Councilmember Lee.
Present.
And Councilwoman Rodriguez. Believe she's absent. And that's three members in the forum, Mr. Chair.
Excellent, thank you so much. We'll call to order this regular media of Los Angeles, meeting of Los Angeles City Council's Planning and Land Use Management Committee. We're joined by two members. And the clerk, as well as the city attorney's office. Before we go into deliberating over items, we want to open up the meeting to public comment. This is the time to call in if you want to speak on one or more items. Mr. Mejia will read additional, or the clerk will read additional instructions around public comments, the rules, the processes, and the phone numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the public who would like to offer public comment on the items listed on the agenda should call 1-669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 161-644-6631.
Ms. Rosales, are you on the line?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry about that, sir. Members of the pub-- can you hear me, sir?
We can hear you great, thank you.
Okay. Members of the public who would like to offer public comment on the items listed on the agenda should call 1-669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 161-644-6631 and then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. During public comment, city staff will call on members of the public by the last four digits of their phone number. By pressing star nine, callers raise their virtual hand to request to speak. Once the caller hears the last four digits of their phone number, an automated Zoom voice will ask the caller to press star six to unmute themselves when it is their turn to speak. Once the caller is ready to speak, they must state their name and the items they are calling to speak on. Failure to do so will result in the call being muted and subsequently disconnected. Applicants and/or their representatives and and appellants and/or their representatives will be allowed to speak for a total of three minutes per side unless otherwise noted by the chair. Members of the public wishing to speak on one agenda item only shall have an opportunity to speak for one minute. Appellants and applicants will be given an opportunity to speak when their item is called. Each appellant and applicant has a total of three minutes to speak. An appellant can choose to have a single representative speak on his or her behalf or divide the three minutes among his or her team. Anyone else, including an attorney or project manager, wishing to speak on an appellant's behalf who does not do so during this three-minute period may offer a minute of public comment whenever the committee chairperson opens the public comment period for the meeting, which is usually at the beginning of the meeting. Therefore, we expect that appellants and applicants have the representative teams assembled and ready to present at the appropriate times today. Members of the public wishing to speak on more than one item shall state that and shall be allowed to speak for a total of two minutes. Failure to raise your hand to speak in a timely manner before the comment period for the item ends results in forfeiture of the opportunity to participate in public comment for the item. Madam City Attorney, please provide additional guidance on the public comment.
Adrian Corasani, City Attorney's Office. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not speaking on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are speaking on an agenda item, I will provide one brief warning. If you do not immediately and clearly return to the topic, or if you continue to stray off topic and disrupt the meeting, you will forfeit the rest of your time and we will move on to the next speaker. You will be informed when your time is up.
All right, so before we go to the phones, I want to ask members of the committee, members of the Department of City Planning staff, or members from council offices with items on the agenda today, if there are any amendments that we should read into the record now before we go into public comment.
Hi, Jeff, City Planning. We have for item number 10, Council District number five has submitted a letter requesting an amendment. And, yeah, so, and this for your consideration. So should I read it into right now?
Yes.
Okay. So, all right, the amendment would be to increase the parking threshold for parking relief from 5,000 square feet to 15,000 square feet. As currently written, the proposed relief only applies to the first 5,000 square feet. So anything above that 5,000 square feet would have to be parked by today's standard. This amendment would increase that threshold to 15,000 square feet for changes of use.
Thank you so much, Mr. Call. Any others?
Yes, Council District 13 for item number nine.
Okay.
We would like to see a modification of the T condition to remove the language under section 2B to remove construct suitable surfacing to join the existing improvements to provide an 18-foot-and-a-half roadway with asphalt concrete pavement integral concrete curb and a 12-foot with concrete sidewalk. And we would like to add the language repair and/or replace any damaged cracked or off-grade concrete curb, gutter, sidewalk.
To join the existing improvements to provide an 18-foot-and-a-half roadway with asphalt concrete pavement integral concrete curb and a 12-foot--
Pavement with the new office development, including any necessary removal and reconstruction of existing improvements satisfactory to the city engineer.
All right, Mr. Bullock, it seemed like there were about three or four of you talking there. Did you get-- were you able to get that, Mr. Mejia, Ms. Corasani?
I did, Councilman, and that's-- His amendments have been uploaded into the council file in a letter dated May 16 already.
Got it, okay. Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Any others? All right, hearing no others. We have agenda items before us and they've been amended. And now we can open up for public comment.
Caller with a number ending in 0973, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Dan Marshner. I'm speaking on item number one, council file number 22-03003CD11. I support LMU's request to amend its master plan. I've worked in the admissions office of LMU since 2015 and been a Westchester resident since then. I'm also an adjunct professor in LMU School of Education. My youngest daughter attends the LMU Children's Center. My youngest daughter is a student and is about to graduate from Wright Middle School. We participate in many activities at the Wright Westchester Recreation Center as a family and really enjoy living in Westchester. We feel that an investment in LMU is an investment in the community. We think that LMU strives to be a good community partner and this amendment to the master plan would be beneficial to the university and to Westchester. Please support this amendment and thank you for hearing my comments.
Caller with a number ending in 9132, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Eric Snyder. I would like to speak on agenda item number one. That's council file number 22-0300CD11. I live a short walk away from the campus of LMU on Holy Cross Place. I would like to firmly state that I support this amendment. I am fortunate to have moved to the Westchester community three years ago. The walkability of this community, including safety with well-lit roadways and campus safety and security on the job, cleanliness and having friendly neighbors makes the area a great place to walk and run with my family and my dogs. We've had some great experiences here. I have lived close by to a few different universities that I'd like to note. The relationship LMU has with the community is excellent. The university adds vibrancy to the community, keeps it safe, keeps its business solvent, adds relevance to where we call home. The measure that LMU is taking to keep a strong relationship with the community is apparent. The addition of this arena and renovation of Gersten Pavilion will not be a downside to this relationship. It will only strengthen these ties. I respectfully request you to move forward and approve the proposed master plan amendment. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Speaker.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Ashley Armstrong and I'll be speaking on item one, council file number 22-0300CD11. I currently serve as the Deputy Director of Athletics and Senior Women Administrator for the Athletic Department at LMU. We are committed to continue improving the experience of our student athletes and our athletic teams. This amendment would allow LMU to retain and renovate Gersten Pavilion while it pursues building a new competition venue on campus as previously agreed upon in the LMU master plan. Upgrading Gersten Pavilion will provide essential resources for LMU student athletes, including academic support facilities and more competitive practice and training facilities. LMU's reinvestment in Gersten Pavilion is a reinvestment in our community. We've had one of the most successful semesters in LMU history this past spring with three, or two individuals making postseason NCAA appearances and three of our women's teams actually competing in the NCAA tournament, most notably our beach volleyball program, which finished fifth in the country at the 2022 NCAA championship.
That's your time.
I support this amendment. Thank you.
So we have 21 speakers on the queue. Ms. Corasani, we're gonna leave public comment open until 2:45. That gives an additional 30 minutes and then we'll go close public comment and go into our regular business.
Okay, John's good, thank you.
Hi, can we be heard?
We can hear you, caller. You may begin.
Okay.
Hello, my name is James Niemi and I am prepared with agenda item 6 and 7. Here's the reason why I want to stay here. One, it's affordable. I'm 83 years old and I have a fixed income. I've lived here for about 40 years. Moving would increase my rent, would put me in hardship. Two, convenience. Bus stop is close by for my shopping. Being my doctor in the hospital. Territory safety. It's a place where I just can live. I can go out in the neighborhood without fear of being mobbed or harassed. There's a history of our building here. After the war, many Japanese people coming from Inchenmichi couldn't find jobs or a place to rent due to prejudice. As a result, boarding houses became very popular. Most tenants were gardeners. They would go to work while the boarding house owner would cook for their meal, care their apartment. This boarding house has been here for almost 100 years. It also served once as an employment agency for Japanese and Japanese Americans. Sadly, only a few left today. To me, this boarding house is a reminder that war and prejudice will not always win. And thank you for your time today.
Thanks for listening. We're here with several other tenants that don't have access to phones, so we would like to request another two minutes for another one of the tenants to speak. Is this possible?
Adrian Corasani, City Attorney's Office. I believe the chair had set the time at one minute per caller.
Okay, these callers are monolingual Japanese speakers and there is no translation provided by the city, but we have provided community translation. So we're hoping that someone could speak due to those circumstances.
If the chair concurs, that is the normal practice when we have translators, but it's at the chair's discretion.
Thanks for considering.
Mr. Harris Dawson, I think you were muted.
The chair offers concurrence on that.
So two minutes for translations.
So we can speak for another two minutes?
If your next speaker needs a translator, you can have two minutes, yes.
Great, okay, yes, we'd like to speak for another two minutes.
You may begin.
Yes, please begin.
Okay, great. We're speaking again in favor of agenda items six and seven. And now we'll start.
I guess I'll translate as he goes by. Hi, my name is Yasu. I'm a translator. Hi, my name is Nobuharu Hamasawa and I live in 564 North Virgil.
Hi, I've been living here more than 10 years and I-- I'm pretty positive that this building has been here for a long time and that this is really valuable for us to recognize as a historical monument. Yeah, I know, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller, please state your name and which items you're speaking on. Caller with the number ending in 5258, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Selsis and I'm calling in support of the nomination for the 560, 560 were Virgil Ozawa boarding houses. The tenants just spoke and it was so nice. I'm nominating this house for the historic cultural monument. And I believe it's because the buildings are extremely rare examples of pre-war Japanese boarding houses and the only two used before both and after World War II. They represent early residential patterns that generated a thriving J-flatt Japanese-American community. And that's lost today and we can't lose that with further displacement of the tenants at the Ozawa Boarding House. The buildings testify that Ozawa's family leadership in developing the J-flatt enclave and the multiracial networks of solidarity and interdependence across the neighborhood. They are a very important part of our history and also our presence. And I would like for this council, the Plum Committee, to support the designation of these buildings as a historic cultural monument, as a significant landmark for the Japanese-American community.
Thank you, caller. That's your time. Caller with a number ending in 8070, please state your name and which item you're speaking on.
Hi, this is Roslyn Segara, going to speak on multiple items. Again, I'm Roslyn Segara with the Los Angeles Conservancy, expressing support for items six and seven. Historic cultural monument designation for these two sites makes visible the voices and memories of tenants and community members associated with the Ozawa and Joyce boarding houses, both past and present. These houses have been and still are where elderly tenants call home, where neighbors and community members gather to share stories and meals, build relationships and organize. While there were once over 100 boarding houses across the city, only a few remain today. The Ozawa and Joyce boarding houses are the only two standing that served Japanese-Americans both before and after World War II. The Ozawa boarding house has continuously housed Japanese and Japanese-Americans for 108 years. During World War II, three generations of the Ozawa family were forcibly removed from the houses and incarcerated in concentration camps. And yet, the Ozawas returned to Los Angeles and the boarding houses again served as an anchor to rebuild community. These boarding houses are tangible reminders of the contributions of Japanese immigrants who despite racism and xenophobia established a thriving enclave in East Hollywood. Designate these buildings to increase the number of monuments, currently less than 2% of the total HCMs that recognize LA's Asian-American and Pacific Islander heritage. As we close out AAPI Heritage Month today, we ask you to join us in recognizing and celebrating the century-plus legacy of these buildings as community-serving anchors and affordable housing for Japanese-Americans. We urge you to recommend HCM designation. Thank you.
Thank you, caller.
My name is Susan Gans and I speak on item 11, file 22-0505, for at least 51 homeowners who oppose this variance. Councilman Corz has received $32,000 in campaign contributions from people closely tied to Ula, including $12,700 from people whose names would be on the signs. His 245 motion, made without notice and lacking any transparency, is a political favor, if not a pay-to-play scheme. We have asked the FBI and Ethics Commission to investigate. The rule of reciprocity among council members does not apply when your approval makes you complicit in corruption. The findings written by Ula's attorney contain many false and misleading statements, as explained in my May 27 letter. It would be an abuse of authority for the council to adopt these fictional findings and overturn the VA's decision, which was reached after four hours of hearings and careful review of the facts, the law, and over 300 pages of documents. The variance will set a bad precedent and create a loophole in the city's laws. It doesn't matter at all that only one sign will be visible from our homes. The sign is too large, the school entrance is obvious without a sign, and a violation is a violation whether visible or not. The court rules again--
Hi, my name is Aldo Perez. I will be speaking on item one, council file number 22-0300CD11. I support LMU in this amendment. I have lived in the Westchester community for 22 years. LMU is a vital part of this community. They are a good partner, providing the area with activities, athletic activities, holiday events, recreational activities. LMU is essential to this area because they support the family and the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, caller. Caller with a number ending in 2945, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm speaking on item eight. Good afternoon, my name is Sylvia Beta and joining me is my husband Dino Beta. For the record, I am speaking at this meeting because I oppose this construction and because I am a budding neighbor and owner at North Commonwealth Avenue, which is behind in the middle of where Mr. Porbaba wants to build this building. This construction will significantly impact our area, not just now, but in the long run, in the sense that it will detract from being a residential community to a commercialized community. It would also impact in a sense that it will bring a nuisance as far as loud noises, the right to our privacy, our security, and the amount of people and vehicles that this building will have. Also, in addition to traffic already previously mentioned previously, there will be more traffic that will flow through this area and the location where this building will be built is a one-lane, two-way street, which I believe is not ideal for this type and size of this building. And for this reason, I oppose it.
Thank you, Speaker. That's your time. Caller with a number ending in 8147, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Yes, good afternoon, my name is Stephen San. I'm calling to speak on item number 10, the amendments to the Westwood Village specific plan. I'm the chairman of the Westwood Community Council and want to express our profound disappointment in our council member. Our community and many other groups, the neighborhood council and others, work diligently and agree to 18 sweeping amendments that are before this Plum Committee today and council. These are the most sweeping changes in the history of the specific plan. The one that we do not agree with is the very ill-advised and unjustified evisceration of design review of signage. This is not a best practice. This is not in keeping with section 1650 of the municipal code. It is not in keeping with what other communities, including the San Vicente Corridor Plan in Brentwood, Palisades, and many others. It's totally unjustified and it's deeply disappointing that our council member was not able to support the diligent efforts of our community to reach compromise. And we know that it's going to be approved. That's the way it's done in City Hall. That's the way it's done in Plum. But want to be on record of our extreme disappointment with this very sorry outcome. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jessica Dabney and I am speaking today in support of item number 10. I am a commercial property owner in Westwood Village and I also sit on the board of the WVIA, which is the official name of the Business Improvement District. Again, I am speaking today in support of all of the amendments to the specific plan for Westwood Village, including the signage amendment. These amendments are all desperately needed to help Westwood Village survive and thrive. The regulations in Westwood Village are more restrictive than anywhere else in Los Angeles. These restrictions make businesses not want to open in Westwood, which is borne out by the very high, approximately 39% vacancy rate that currently exists in the village. Just a couple of examples, the current parking requirements prevent new leasing from taking place. The current signage approval process is cumbersome and expensive and does nothing to discourage illegal signs. Please help us eliminate restrictions that do not conform to best practices--
Thank you, caller. That's your time.
--in planning and help businesses. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Caller with a number ending in 8043, please state your name and which items you're speaking on.
Hello, my name is Kevin Crummy and I want to comment on item number 10. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
I'm the chief investment officer for Douglas Emmett. Douglas Emmett is the largest property owner in Westwood. Douglas Emmett is the largest property owner in Westwood. We own and operate six office buildings totaling approximately 2.2 million square feet. We also own 350 apartments and 50,000 square feet of ground floor retail space. Westwood Village is suffering. The village vacancy rate, which was over 26% before the pandemic, is now approximately 40%. The village is burdened with an outdated, overly prescriptive specific plan ripe with requirements that are ill-suited for 21st century retail and restaurant. Douglas Emmett supports the proposed amendments and the council members' recommended changes listed in his May 12th letter. These amendments will make it faster, easier, and less expensive to open new businesses in Westwood. We urge the Plum Committee to pass the proposed amendments so that Westwood can begin its recovery process. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Councilmember, I'm speaking on, in favor of item number 10, this is Margaret Taylor of Apex LA for the record. Revitalization and recovery of Westwood Village is critically dependent upon approval of item 10, as proposed and amended by council member Corretts with the 15,000's per foot new threshold for changes of use. The specific plan that's currently written provides complex layers of regulation that make it one of the highest-risk locations to consider for investment as a potential new tenant. COVID-19 has increased vacancy rates, making it essential for the city to act quickly. The current specific plan puts Westwood Village at a disadvantage compared to other locations close inside the city of Los Angeles as well as the LA region. Landies consultants such as myself receive queries that clearly make it obvious that this location, due to the current configuration of the specific plan, is more expensive, higher risk, and longer, creating uncertainty to invest as a tenant in Westwood Village. This community could be thriving with the modifications proposed. Right now, it is in desperate need of your support. Thank you for your consideration.
Honorable committee members, my name is Andrew Thomas, I'm speaking on item 10. I'm the executive director of the Westwood Village Business Improvement District. Our organization represents commercial property owners in over 2,400 businesses in our district. The planned amendments are desperately needed, the village vacancy rate for ground floor spaces is over 39%. Great tenants are unable to lease in the village because they're inexplicably characterized as fast food or because they can't meet our parking requirement. Also, our signage approval process is excessive and much more expensive than the actual cost of fabricating and installing a sign, which has led to the placement of unsightly banners and illegal signs in our district. This process must be reformed. On behalf of our Business Improvement District, I support the proposed amendments plus ask that the elimination of parking requirements for changes of use extend its basis to 15,000 square feet and not just be limited to spaces of 5,000 square feet. Please support amending the specific plan. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, my name is Chad Mender and I'll be speaking on agenda item number 1, council file number 22-0300, CD 11. My name is Chad Mender and I'm the president and CEO of the LAX Coastal Chamber of Commerce. I'm here today on behalf of our board of directors, our 600 businesses and 65,000 area jobs we represent on the west side of Los Angeles, to express our support of the amendment to LMU's master plan. The Chamber has been a proud partner with LMU throughout the years on several initiatives and projects, including our annual Fourth of July Parade, our Teacher Eddie Awards, the Rock Roll and Run for Education, and so many more community events. We value the university's commitment to strengthen its relationship with the neighborhood and is serving as a valued resource in Westchester. As LMU continues to grow into a world-class institution, the Chamber supports the university's efforts to focus on its athletics and upgrade its facilities. This includes repurposing of Kirsten Pavilion as well as the addition of the Academic Center for Athletes in Upgraded Training and Recovery Areas. The LAX Coastal Chamber of Commerce-
Thank you caller, that's your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Lydia Amasso and I'm speaking on agenda item number 1, council file number 22-0300, CD 11. I've lived in the Westchester community for over 30 years. I'm speaking today in support of the amendment to LMU's master plan as a very proud alumna and staff member. Loyola Marymount University has consistently proven itself to be a foundational leader in the Westchester community. My personal and professional experience is that LMU does nothing without extraordinary thought, intention, reflection, research, purpose, and integrity. Care, concern, and impact on the other and the collective good is always upremosed in the university's mind, thought process, and execution. I'm proud to support the amendment to LMU's master plan and to support a better LMU for our students, our athletes, our community, and our city. I respectfully request that you move forward and approve the proposed master plan amendment. Thank you kindly for your time.
Thank you caller. Caller, please state your name and which item you're speaking on.
Hello, this is Jonathan Sutko, the executive director of the United Cannabis and Business Association. I'm here speaking on items number 2, 4, and 5. With all of these items, the United Cannabis Business Association strongly supports the council's decisions towards enforcement as well as setting up an emblem program that will help further that cause. Strong enforcement helps towards promoting a viable legal industry, cannabis industry in the city of Los Angeles and sets examples for many of our neighbors around us. We thank the council for their leadership on this and we look forward to supporting them as we continue as done following. Thank you.
Caller with a number ending in 7546, please press star 6 to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you so much. My name is Andrew Lewis. I am speaking on agenda item 10. I am currently a stakeholder in Westwood Village, I'm also the vice president of the Northwestwood Neighborhood Council, although today I'm calling in my personal capacity. I support the Westwood Village specific plan amendments recommended, I believe unanimously by the LA City Planning Department and the Planning Commission. As has been stated and alluded to, these amendments are desperately needed to help lower the absurdly high vacancy rate in Westwood Village and get our neighborhood thriving once again. There are overly restrictive barriers in place for businesses to survive and to do well. These amendments are long overdue and they will help revitalize Westwood as well as reconnect UCLA to the next-door community. So please consider this today as you review agenda item 10.
Thank you caller, that's your time.
Hello, my name is Doug Gaines. First I have to object to this committee meeting, I want the public to speak on agenda items on their calls, which denies us an opportunity to respond to the staff report or you to pay attention or comments. I'm going to comment on agenda item number 8. I put into the record a May 17th objection letter, but I'm told that in testimony is not forwarded to you, so I don't know how you can be able to review it before you vote on this. This is a sequel appeal, sequel requires an accurate project description, yet this is not a 40-unit apartment building, but is instead a 195-unit co-living project. Each bedroom will have its own door lock and each of these bedrooms we rented out as single units. I want to point out that the noise report is totally flawed. The analysis has no measurements of onsite ambient noise levels to base its conclusion. It is purely generized commentary lacking any substantial evidence. Further, the noise report is flawed, is a localized significant threshold of 83 feet for construction-related noise impacts based upon nearest residential receptor being 83 feet from the project site. However, in fact, the nearest residential receptor is actually located just 3 feet from the site and the impacts will be-
Thank you caller, that's your time.
Hi, my name is Ariana Gomez, I am the deputy director of the Westwood Village Business Improvement District and I am calling in support of agenda item 10. Organization represents 70 unique commercial property owners in over 2,400 businesses in our district. On behalf of the Westwood Village Improvement Association, I support the proposed amendments plus support increasing the limit on eliminating parking requirements for business changes of use from 5,000 square feet to 15,000. Please help Westwood Village compete with other commercial centers and help us provide a great destination for our Westwood neighbors to frequent. I strongly encourage you to amend the plan. Thank you.
Thank you speaker. And that concludes public comment in the allotted time, Mr. Chair.
Madam City Attorney, we have additional people on the queue, could you please advise us on how to proceed?
Adrian Corosani, City Attorney's Office. It's at the chair's discretion, because you of course have to run an efficient meeting and are aware of any quorum constraints, you can extend the time period. As of now, we have, it looks like over 30 hands still raised. And so if you gave each caller about a minute, that hopefully will suffice to capture all public comment, if that is something that you're able to do with the time restrictions.
All right, we'll proceed and go for no more than 30 minutes, but we'll be in communication with the members of the committee, staff, to make sure we can hold quorum. So we'll go ahead and proceed with the remaining callers.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good afternoon, my name is Dewann Muller, I'm speaking on agenda item number 10 and I'm calling in on behalf of UCLA, where I serve as a senior executive director for our Office of Government and Community Relations. Many of the recommended changes proposed by the LA Department of City Planning are long overdue. We have been encouraged to see community members engage in productive conversations and come together in agreement on nearly all of the proposed changes. One such agreement which is not reflected in the current draft is to increase the parking exemption threshold for change of use from the 5,000 square feet limitation to 15,000 square feet. For our May 16th letter, we encourage you to modify the parking exemption threshold for change of use to 15,000 square feet to allow for more vacant properties to benefit from a simpler process for changing the prior use. One area where the broader community was not able to come to agreement relates to the sign review procedure. If the city council decides to adopt the proposed administrative review process for signage, we urge the adoption of the additional sign prohibitions proposed in the amendment.
Thank you caller, that's your time.
We urge the community to move the amendment process forward.
Hi, my name is David Nagel and I would like to speak in support of agenda item number 11 and in support of approving the variance for signage. I want to remark that none of the signs are visible to the neighbors across the street or any of the neighbors in the neighborhood with the exception of the entrance sign. All of the signs are non-illuminated, they have no impact on the neighborhood, and at the same time, will serve well for the school. We should do everything we can to support schools and hospitals and other institutions like that in residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Caller with an unidentified number, please press star 6 to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Rabbi Sufferin, I live in the community, I'm talking about agenda number 11. I live in the community about 10 blocks from the school, I'm also the head of school. And I'm calling to support, to urge the Plum Committee to support the signage variance. Ula takes its relationship with the neighborhood extremely seriously, values the relationship, and does everything it can to be neighborly, but more than neighborly, to be a shining light for the community. The community fully supports Ula, there are very few dissenting opinions. The majority of the community is supportive of Ula. These are signs that cannot be seen except for one, which is the main entrance. Every institution deserves a sign over its main entrance. There's been many compromises to get to it. And we want to go about this the right way by applying for a variance. If you stand anywhere outside the campus, you will not be able to see any single sign, it does not impact the community.
Thank you speaker, that's your time.
Thank you.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. I am calling in support of item number 11, the zoning variance for the Ula High School on Pico Boulevard. I have two children in Ula High School and have lived in the neighborhood for over 20 years. The signs proposed by Ula are not billboards or advertisements. The signs are conservative identification and directional signs that will benefit students, faculty, staff, visitors, and first responders by identifying the various buildings and facilities on campus. They're well-designed and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and I highly support and would appreciate the approval of this variance. Thank you.
Thank you speaker.
Good afternoon, everybody, my name is John Luceroian, I'm the executive director of the Westchester Family YMCA. I'm calling to speak on behalf of agenda item number 1, council file number 22-0300, CD 11. I wanted to share that the LMU and the YMCA have a longstanding partnership. LMU has been a pillar in our community and has supported various community organizations and has been a great partner for decades. We, at our January board meeting, voted unanimously in support of the amendments proposed by the university. And so I'd like to share that the YMCA is fully in support of LMU's amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you caller.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hey, everybody, how's it going? My name is Cole Sodzoff. I am calling in support of item number 10, amending the Westwood Village specific plan. The Westwood Village is one of the most recognizable and important college neighborhoods in the country. The current Westwood Village specific plan is antiquated, making it difficult for new businesses to enter, namely restaurants resulting in the vacancy rate close to 40%. I have firsthand experience working through this as I'm part of a company moving into the neighborhood and just wanted to see this neighborhood flourish and return to its pre-COVID liveliness and success. Thank you all for your time.
Hi, my name is Sachi Cooper and I'm the Plum Committee co-chair of the Northwestwood Neighborhood Council and the former UCLA USAC Facilities Commissioner. I'm calling to support the Westwood Village specific plan amendments recommended by the LA City Planning Department and supported by the LA Planning Commission. City Planning Department and supported by the L.A. Planning Commission and the Westwood Village Improvement Association. During my time at UCLA, I've heard two stories of Westwood, one of a glorious, exciting past where Westwood was the place to be, and the present-day reality of vacant storefronts and local residents looking elsewhere for entertainment. The number-one reason for this downfall is the outdated regulations within the specific plan, where new businesses with the ability to leave can't even end up being here because they can't afford the cost of signage and so much more. The specific plan has really got to go. Its outdated regulations artificially suppress Westwood's economic development, hurting our residents, students, employees, and businesses in a time when while all we're asking for is basic support. I urge you to approve the specific plan amendments presented to you today. Thank you.
Thank you caller.
Hello, hi, good afternoon. My name is Yashida Katsuragi. I'm a community translator for the Agenda Item Six and Seven, and I have one of the residents here who would like to speak. And can we get the one-note extension for the translation?
No, we're over time, so we gotta hold everybody to one minute.
Okay, so this is gonna be really quick.
So, hi, my name is Shiva O. I'm in favor of the Agenda Item Six and Seven, and I'm resident of five-six-four North Boro, and I've been living here more than-
Thank you caller, that's your time.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good afternoon, I'm calling in support of Agenda Item Ten. My name is Evan Sarah, and I serve on the Northwest Village Neighborhood Council, and I'm also a student at UCLA. The Westwood Village specific plan has caused a crippling forty percent vacancy rate and has denied entry to businesses and other uses that would serve the thousands of young people who live and work in this area. The plan's parking requirements in particular have made changes in use nearly impossible, and the signage regulations have placed undue power in the hands of a select few to control the establishment of new businesses. These regulations have ensured that Westwood Village has fallen behind the curve and that new and upcoming commercial districts throughout the city are outcompeting us, even as we add more residents each year. It seems like a no-brainer to change these regulations, and there is a small group of concerned stakeholders from outside of our community, including the Westwood Neighborhood Council, whose boundaries do not cover any of the specific plan area and who still resist common sense reform. We deserve better, and these amendments are a good place to start. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Furconny Alston. I am the President of the Northwest Village Neighborhood Council. I'm here speaking in behalf of my personal capacity in support of the Westwood Village specific plan amendments recommended by the L.A. City Planning Department and supported by the Los Angeles Planning Commission and the Westwood Village Improvement Association. Westwood Village specific plan amendments are desperately needed. We have vacancies of thirty-nine percent. The village deserves better. The businesses deserve better. We can do better, and I'm excited for these changes. Thank you so much, and I hope to see these plans supported by this meeting today. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Rachel Heck. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, hi, my name is Rachel Heck, and I am calling in support of the granting of the zoning variance. I'm calling in support of Ula. I've been a community member for over fifteen years. I want to make it very clear that these signs in no way, shape, or form affect the community adversely. They are respectful signs, conservative signs, they're directional signs, they're important for safety, and every institution and business should be granted permission to have signs. They do not at all adversely affect the community. They are respectful. Ula has gone above and beyond to respect the community in every way, shape, and form, and they should not be, there should be no issues here with the zoning variance. We were, I lost you. We urge the council, I really truly urge the council members to look more deeply into what's going on here and completely support the variance zoning. Thank you.
Thank you Speaker.
Good afternoon, my name is Jeremy Wolf. I'm a board member of the Westwood Village Improvement Association, and I, in that capacity, I also represent a large property owner in the village as their property manager. I support completely the amendments to the Westwood Village specific plan and urge this committee to pass those amendments as soon as possible. We've had thirty years of a specific plan that has crippled the village, and we need these amendments now. Thank you.
You?
Hi, this is Sandra Masler. I'm calling in support of granting the variance for Agenda Eleven. I have always found Ula to be respectful to their neighbors, me being one of them. I just live a few blocks to the east. They are proposing adding some signage to the exterior of the building. The signage will not be lit or visible to the street. There is only one sign that would be visible, and that would be on the costello side of the building in front of the main entrance, and it will be well-designed, well-placed, and flow with the architecture of the building. I believe they should be allowed to put a sign at their entrance like other institutions are afforded. Again, as far as the other signs are concerned, if they can't be seen, then why would they? I am respectfully requesting reapproval to be granted to Ula, and thank you for your time.
Hello?
We can hear you Speaker.
Hi, my name is Michael Bernstein, and I am speaking on Agenda Number Eleven. I'm calling today in support of granting a zoning variance to Ula. Ula is and has been a valued and respected institution in the Los Angeles community for over forty years. The proposed signage has been designed and will be located in areas that will have little or no impact of negative manner to the community. The signage we feel is very appropriate to Ula, and ask that you grant them the requested zoning variance. I've lived in the area for the past fifteen years, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you caller.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Eliana Marcus. I live just a block away from Ula, and I definitely support the sign, and I hope that they consider approving it. And I agree with all the other callers that have called in in support of the sign, and I hope it gets passed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Speaker. Caller with a number ending in one-seven-six-seven, please state your name and which item you're speaking on.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, this is Alan Sternberg. I'm calling in support of Item Number Eleven. I think we've all seen tons of signage variance applications for billboards and advertisements, but the Ula application is not that. The proposed signs are in fact, in my opinion, very, very conservative. They're directional signs that'll help identify for first responders where exactly the facilities lie, where the buildings lie on the campus. The signs, in my opinion, are very well-designed. They're compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, so I think that they should be approved as submitted. Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. My name is Stevie Chu, and I'm speaking on behalf of Agenda Item Number Ten. I'm a resident of Westwood Village and undergraduate student at UCLA. I'm the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three UCLA Undergraduate Student Association Council Facilities Commissioner. I support the Westwood Village specific plan amendments recommended by the L.A. City Planning Department, supported by the L.A. Planning Commission and the Westwood Village Improvement Association. I've lived in Westwood for the past three years. I'm a student worker that's worked for a small business owner in Westwood during the pandemic. I've recognized how the restrictions of current Westwood Village specific plans have affected Westwood business owners and thus student workers for those businesses. Reducing restrictions surrounding parking requirements and signage approval will help support Westwood businesses valuable to the Westwood community and undergraduate students at UCLA. Please consider the amendments to the Westwood Village specific plan.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Rima Bronte of Cal American Corporation. I'm calling in support of the Westwood Village specific plan amendments recommended by L.A. City Planning Department and supported by L.A. Planning Commission and the Westwood Improvement Association. I live and work in Westwood. I manage Westwood Village Square. The city of L.A. must do more to help businesses in Westwood Village to open and stay open. Cities like Santa Monica, Pasadena, West Hollywood, and Beverly Hills have eliminated excessive regulations. L.A. must do the same as we risk losing our entrepreneurs to other cities. So our outdated regulations in Westwood Village are more restricted than anywhere else in the city of Los Angeles, and the Westwood specific plan is cited by brokers and- Thank you for-
Caller with the number ending in five-seven-seven-five, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Susan Gans, and I speak on Item Eleven, File Twenty-Two-Dash-O-Five-O-Five, for at least fifty-one homeowners who oppose this variance requested by Ula. Councilman Corus has received thirty-two thousand dollars in campaign contributions from people closely tied to Ula, including twelve thousand seven hundred dollars from people whose names would be on the signs. His two-forty-five motion made without notice and lacking any transparency is a political favor, if not a pay-to-play scheme. We have asked the FBI and Ethics Commission to investigate. The rule of reciprocity among council members doesn't apply when your approval makes you complicit in this corruption. The findings written by Ula's attorney contain many false or misleading statements as explained in my May twenty-seventh letter. It would be an abuse of authority for the council to adjust fictional findings and overturn the VA's decision, which was reached after four hours of hearings and careful review of the facts, the law, and over three hundred pages of documents.
Thank you Speaker, that's your time.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good afternoon, I'm speaking on Item Number Ten, to support, fully support the Westwood Village specific plan amendments. My name is Neil Golub. I am with CBRE. I've been a commercial retail leasing broker for the past thirty years, also a local resident, live close to the village, so calling in two capacities. You know, born and raised in Platte, Alray. We could have gone to the South Bay, Redondo, Forest, Manhattan Beach. We came to Westwood Village. Westwood Village growing up was the place to be in, you know, high school, junior high school. We'd love to see that come back. There's no reason why it shouldn't come back. As a local, you know, broker doing retail and restaurant deals, we need help. So fully support this. Please help us. I've had, on a personal level, restaurant tenants five, ten, fifteen, twenty years ago who wanted to be in the village and simply could not because of moratorium, parking restrictions. What creates the vibrancy is, you know, all the restaurants and outdoor, especially with COVID even, outdoor seating, and that creates quick traffic.
Caller with the number ending in eight-three-eight-three, please state your name and which item you're speaking on.
Hello, my name is Aaron Robin. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Aaron Robin. I'm calling in support of Agenda Number Eleven. I'm an active member of the community. I'm a homeowner where my family and I live, just a few short blocks away from the property. I am a property owner, a retail business owner in the immediate vicinity. I serve as president of the charity organization directly across the street from Ula. Ula is a great community partner, and we are in support of Agenda Item Number Eleven. Ula is a respected educational institution that is highly valued by the community. We strongly support Ula's application for signage variance and urge its approval. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Caller with the number ending in one-one-five-zero, please state your name and which item you're speaking on.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is David Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of Agenda Item Number Eleven. I'm calling in support of the variance for the signage variance for Ula. I live about a block away from the campus, and I feel that the signage variance is a common sense approach dealing with the aesthetic needs of the community as well as the practical needs of the institution. Only one is actually visible from the street, and the rest of them are used primarily for direction and things of that nature, and I feel that the signage variance is just a common sense approach and would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you Speaker.
Hi, my name is Victoria Frankel. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, I'm calling in reference to Agenda Item Number Eleven, and I'm speaking in support of granting a zoning variance for Ula High School. I want you to know that I'm on the Beverlywood Homeowners Association. I'm on their Board of Directors and represent thirteen-hundred-and-fifty homes around Ula, and given that I've held this position for over ten years, often community members come to me when they're concerned about any issues in the community. No one has come up to me with other than supporting this signage zoning variance. As has been stated by many previous callers, none of the signs are going to be visible from outside the building other than for over the entrance, which is kind of every, every building is allowed, entrance is allowed to have some sort of signage so people know where it is.
Thank you caller, that's your time.
Thank you.
Caller with the number ending in four-seven-three-eight, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Daniel Fishman, and I am speaking on Agenda Number Eleven, the sign variance for Ula High School. I am a parent in the school. I'm also a neighbor. I live a half a block away from the school, and I strongly urge the council's approval of this variance request. Eight of the nine signs, I know this has been said many times, they're not visible to anybody from outside of the school. So why neighbors would make a problem and complain and say they don't want it? It's simply because they're unhappy with our school being in that location. But these signs should be approved- But these signs should be approved. They're needed. The school is a great neighbor. They provide security to everybody in the area, and they follow the rules. They are not putting up signs without permission. They're doing things the right way, and in that regard, I hope you approve this variance. Number 11, Ula High. Thank you.
Caller with the number ending in two, one, five, eight. Please state your name and which item you're speaking on.
Yes, my name is Chris Hamitman. I'm calling in support of Item Number 10, in support of the amendment to the Westwood Specific Plan. We own and operate one of the larger buildings in the Westwood Village community. It runs from Limbrook to Kenrath Avenue, and we've been about 50% vacant or more for the last 10 years. And the reason is twofold. Uh, Westwood Village has such a horrible reputation among the brokerage and tenant community, simply because of the onerous burden the specific plan places upon any new tenant or any new occupant entering our village. And even those tenants that do have the financial resources and the will, uh, they're usually buffeted by the Design Review Committee, they're buffeted by uh signage restrictions, food use regulations, and we've even had tenants, national tenants, that have opened so deep in the hole because of these other issues, opening late, having to spend so much money, that they shut down a mere 12 months after opening. This uh revision to the specific plan is necessary in order to revitalize the Westwood Village.
Thank you, Speaker. That's your time. And that concludes the additional 30 minutes allotted for public comment, Mr. Chair.
All right, uh, thank you so much. Thank you to everybody who called in. Uh, Madam City Attorney, I want to note for the record that uh, I think we took upwards of 70 callers uh over uh more than an hour of public comment on uh any and all items that folks wanted to speak on. Uh, and so with that, we'll begin proceeding our, with our regular agenda. Uh, Mr. Mahia, we have Items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Items 1 through 5, uh, the chair is asking that we take those items on consent. If there is not objection, if you could read those into the roll and uh call, read those into the record and call the roll.
Uh, yes. Item 1, uh, Mr. Chair and Committee Members, this is an EIR and the related SEQA findings. It's a report from the Planning Commission on a proposed ordinance to amend the Loyola Marymount University Specific Plan. The recommendation is to approve the proposed ordinance and to request the city attorney to prepare and present the ordinance to amend the Loyola Marymount University Specific Plan. Item 2, it's a motion, uh, Corretts, Price, Harris, Dawson. It's requesting city attorney to prepare and present an ordinance uh consistent with the proposed language, which has been attached as Attachment A to the motion for the issuance of an emblem placard to licensed commercial cannabis businesses and which would incorporate provisions of the Los Angeles County Emblem Program. I will read the recommendations for that motion. One, adopt, adopt with additional recommendations as follows. Instruct the Department of Cannabis Regulation with the assistance of the city attorney and the Department of Building and Safety to report on the feasibility, legal mechanisms, enforcement models, and any resources required to enforce against the use of fraudulent commercial cannabis emblem placards. Two, instruct the Department of Cannabis Regulation with um and the Department of Building and Safety, rather, to report with an outreach plan and a reporting mechanism for constituents to report fraudulent placards. Item 3, this is a categorical exemption from SEQA. It's a report from the Cultural Heritage Commission to include uh the Dassinger Studio and Residence at 7001 Melrose Avenue as a historic cultural monument. Recommendation therein is to approve the inclusion of the Dassinger Studio as a historic cultural monument. Item 4, this is a motion, Harris Dawson, Blumenfield, Buscaino Martinez, requesting the city attorney to report on all civil enforcement actions against unlicensed cannabis businesses that have occurred today and evaluate the feasibility of issuing new cease and desist letters uh to effectively deter the continual operation of unlicensed businesses. It also instructs the police department to report on its enforcement actions and instructs the Department of Cannabis to report on best practices as relates to enforcement mechanisms against unlicensed cannabis businesses in other cities. The recommendation is to adopt the motion. And Item 5 is a motion, Harris Dawson Rodriguez, instructing the Department of Building and Safety, along with the police department, um, to report on the, on the status of the city's patlock enforcement actions and requesting city attorney to uh issue cease and desist letters to unlicensed cannabis businesses and for the cannabis department to report on best practices and enforcement measures in other cities. The recommendation there is to adopt the motion. I will call the roll on all those five items that have been read into the record. Councilmember Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Councilmember Sadios absent. Councilmember Bob Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Aye.
And that's uh four members, and it carries unanimously, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mahia. That takes us to Item Number 6.
Yes, Item 6, this is a categorical exemption from SEQA. It's a report from the Cultural Heritage Commission. It's relative to the inclusion of the Ozawa Boarding House Obayashi Employment Agency at 564 through 564 and a half North Virgil Avenue as a historic cultural monument.
Excellent. So we have a report from uh Department of City Planning, our Cultural Heritage Commission?
Uh, yes. Good afternoon, Chairman Harris Dawson and members of the committee. I'm Melissa Jones with City Planning's Office of Historic Resources. Before you today is the recommendation from the Cultural Heritage Commission to designate the Zawa Boarding House slash Obayashi Employment Agency as an historic culture monument. The subject property is a vernacular two and one-story boarding house with a detached garage located on North Virgil Avenue in East Hollywood. Originally constructed as a single-family residence in 1912, it was purchased in 1914 by first-generation Japanese immigrants, Tsukusaka and Chuya Ozawa, who relocated the single-family dwelling to the rear of the lot and added onto it over time. Across several decades, the Ozawa family provided crucially needed housing and employment for Japanese-Americans, aiding in the stabilization and growth of the Japanese-American middle-class in Los Angeles and the creation of a community within the Madison slash J Flats enclave. The subject property was owned and operated by the Ozawa family as a boarding house in 1980, or until 1980, along with a property at 560 North Virgil Avenue, which is Item Number 7 on today's agenda. Upon review of the nomination, the Cultural Heritage Commission found that the property exemplifies significant contributions to the broad cultural, economic, or social history of the nation, state, city, or community as an excellent and rare example of a 1912 apartment house representing the earliest pattern of multifamily residential development in the Madison slash J Flats enclave in East Hollywood. And the subject property is also significant as a pre-World War II Japanese rooming house. In addition, it is associated with the lives of historic personages important to national, state, city, or local history as the property of three generations of those, of the Ozawa family who are significant to the development of the Madison J Flats neighborhood and leaders within their community. This concludes my report. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, uh, do we have the owner of the property, uh, from the Matt, Mattayoshi family online?
They are not online.
All right, uh, pardon me?
They're not online.
Okay, uh, any comments from uh Council District 13 on this? I know there's already been an amendment, but uh, any additional comments?
Uh, yes, so uh, the amendment was to Item um Number 9, but I just wanted to say in the intro, I'm, these comments will pertain to Items 5 and 6, and the council member supports the historic cultural monument status for both the Ozawa and Joyce Boarding Houses. While these structures are not architecturally significant, their story is. The structures tell of a rich history of the Japanese community and the development of Hollywood and the city of Los Angeles. In fact, these structures today are still providing necessary housing for many Japanese-Americans as we heard from callers earlier in this meeting. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, I, I think you made Item 6 and 7, Mr. Bullock.
That is correct.
Got it. Okay, thank you so much. Any questions or comments from members? All right, uh, I'll move the item, and if there's a second, uh, Mr. Mahia, we can call the roll.
Second.
Uh, yes, council member, uh, the record, the action is to approve the inclusion of the Zawa Boarding House Obayashi Employment Agency as a historic cultural monument. Councilmember Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Councilmember Sadios absent. Councilmember Bob Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Councilmember John Lee.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Aye.
That's uh four members, and it carries, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you so much. That takes us to Item Number 7.
Item 7, it contains a categorical exemption from SEQA. It's a report again from the Cultural Heritage Commission relative to the inclusion of the Joyce Boarding House Ozawa Residence at 560 through 562 North Virgil Avenue as a historic cultural monument.
All right, I'll, I'll just uh check with uh Department of City Planning Office of Historic Resources to see if there's any additional testimony on this. If not, uh, we can go to a vote.
I had a report. If the committee does not want to hear, that's absolutely fine. I don't have any additional findings. The Cultural Heritage Commission made the recommendation to designate the property.
All right, uh, so if there's a second, Mr. Mahia can call the roll.
Second.
Okay, I will call the roll, uh, to approve the inclusion of the Joyce Boarding House Ozawa Residence uh as a historic cultural monument. Councilmember Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Councilmember Sadios absent. Councilmember Bob Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Councilmember John Lee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez.
Aye.
That's uh four members, and it carries, Mr. Chair.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Uh, that takes us to Item Number 8.
Item 8, this is a categorical exemption from SEQA, the related findings, the report from the Planning Commission, and an appeal by David Wheatley from the North Commonwealth United Neighborhood Association relative to the approval of the environmental clearance, the categorical exception, for the construction of a six-story, 40-unit residential for units for extremely low-income households for the property located at 505 through 517 North Hoover Street in CD 13.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mahia. We have a report from Department of City Planning.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is David, one planning assistant with Expedite Processing Section. Uh, we're covering Item 8 on the agenda involving the SEQA related to the construction of a 40-unit residential building located at 505 to 517 North Hoover Street under the TLC incentive program. On October 20, 21, on October 20, 21, a determination letter was issued approving the project. The project was subsequently appealed to the City Planning Commission, in which the City Planning Commission voted six to zero to deny the appeal and sustain the original determination. On February 8th of this year, the North Commonwealth United Neighborhood Association filed an appeal of the Class 32 categorical exemption as the environmental clearance for this project. The appeal challenges the Director of Planning's determination that the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines. The appellant submitted a justification for the appeal citing three objection points. The appellant claims that the project description is inaccurate, uh, two, that the submitted noise report does not provide adequate analysis of construction noise impacts onto nearby sensitive receptors, uh, nor applies mitigation measures that will reduce construction noise significant impacts, and three, that the project's cumulative impacts are ignored. Uh, based on the appeal point submitted by the appellant, planning staff recommends that the SEQA appeal be denied. The first appeal point does not directly address the SEQA clearance and was addressed in the original determination letter and during the City Planning Commission hearing. In addition, the appellant has not provided substantial evidence that there will be any significant impacts related to construction noise or a significant cumulative impact as a result of the project and successive projects. As such, staff has determined that the project qualifies for Class 32 categorical exemption and recommends that the Plumb Committee to recommend for Council actual to deny the submitted SEQA appeal and sustain the Director of Planning's determination. Additional details related to the appeal points were addressed in a staff letter dated May 11th, 2022 that was submitted to the record. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much for uh that report. Now we'll hear from the uh appellant, uh, Carol Setron, I believe.
Uh, hello, can you hear me? This is Carol Setroni.
Yes.
Okay, uh, yeah, actually, David Wheatley uh is the uh appellant who is going to make the presentation. I just prepared a one-minute statement. Um, I was waiting earlier to be called.
You all have uh three minutes and 59 seconds. You can divide it in whatever way you would like.
Well, please call David Wheatley, and I, I'll see if I have any time remaining.
Okay. Mr. Wheatley?
Mr. Wheatley is not on the call.
So, Ms. Petroni, I don't know if uh you'd like to go on, because we don't have Mr. Wheatley online.
Hi, okay, well, thank you. Um, uh, as I said, I had one minute, so I will uh go ahead. Um, so um, we feel this, the approval for this project follows this familiar scenario of how city planning is failing the public by ignoring the needs of the community and the concerns of the adjacent neighbors by approving projects that are in violation of our community plan. They're out of scale and no relationship to the surrounding uh area and no environmental review. Hoover is a teeny, tiny street, one lane each way, with modest, low-profile homes and storefronts. There's nothing close to six stories anywhere in this area. Uh, the project is going to overdensify and overburden an area already stressed from poor infrastructure, snarled traffic, and scarce parking. Uh, this is bad planning. It will ultimately harm the surrounding community. Uh, as also, I want, just want to mention that the TOC guidelines are inconsistent with the Charter Code. They were never approved by the city council nor codified into city law. Uh, so this is a TOC project that is, is barely stretching, barely, barely making it within the restrictions and uh with, with, not, not very well-served by transit. You have to walk through a tunnel of homeless people to get to the metro line, which is about eight blocks away. You know, it, it should not be considered, it should not be uh, uh, considered a TOC project. The community is angry about their concerns consistently being dismissed, and uh, I, I also uh very much object to um the exemptions from uh the uh, uh, the environmental impact such as the noise factors, the uh, there's, there's a hospital half a block uh to the north, I, I'm sorry, to the south. Uh, there's been no um, no respect for the impact that the noise and the uh construction and the overdensification will create for, for those people as well. So I uh urge you to reject this project as, as proposed and support our appeal. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, now we'll hear from our applicant, uh, either uh Mr. Pura or Porobaba or Belliston? We have an applicant on the line?
Yeah, this is Aaron Belliston. I'm the representative for the project.
Perfect, uh, you have three minutes, 59 seconds.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I hope not to use that much time. I appreciate everyone uh here at the Plumb Committee for uh making this meeting possible and continuing forward despite the crazy circumstances related to COVID. We appreciate uh city staff for their diligent uh work in addressing the file and seek not to uh repeat much of what they've said. Um, but it is worth repeating that the project was approved by uh planning staff and the Director's Determination and went to the City Planning Commission where the previous appeal was denied six to zero. The appeal before you today regarding SEQA uh is largely parroted from the appeal that was heard at the City Planning Commission with very little to no changes. Most significantly, there has been no new substantial evidence. Most significantly, there has been no new substantial evidence provided in relation to the items that the appellant is asserting relative to SEQA. Absent the substantial evidence, there really is no appeal. The project description is something that was addressed at the CTC level. The noise report is, their, their problems with it are largely based on their own opinions and conjecture and are not based on anything that has been demonstrated by a professional. Unlike the noise report that was provided by the project during the original consideration of this project. Similarly, cumulative impacts have not been measured nor any by the appellant nor any substantial evidence indicating why those cumulative impacts would warrant any form of mitigation or further review. All these items have been addressed. Their concern that the TOC program is not part of the law is something that has been heard by the California court system and it is not something that should be subject to review or discussion at this time. At this time, I have no further comments, but I am here for any questions should the committee have it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Do you have any comments on this item?
Good afternoon. The council office is supportive of denial of the appeal for the reasons stated by the Department of City Planning. We concur with their assessment. Thank you.
Thank you having heard from the applicant, appellant and Department of City of Planning as well as the council office. Is there any further discussion from members on this item?
Just to clarify, Mr. Chair, the applicant had three minutes allotted to him.
Okay, does, do they want more time?
No, just for the record. Just for the record.
Thank you so much for clarifying the record. Yes.
City Attorney's Office. I'm just trying to confirm with planning regarding the appellant, Mr. Wheatley. It appears he never called in. So, if the chair wouldn't mind pausing on this one and continuing to the next one before it takes, before the committee votes, just so I can make sure we have all the necessary information on this matter.
Sure, we did have Ms. Petroni, though. That's right? Is that accurate?
Yes, it does, yes. Ms. Petroni did speak for three minutes on behalf of the parties supporting the appeal.
Okay. So, we'll hold on this and if we get Mr. Wheatley on the line, we'll come back to it. So, we'll move to item number nine.
Yes, item nine, council members, this is a negative declaration under related SEQA findings. It's a report from the Planning Commission to approve a resolution for a general plan amendment, a zone change ordinance from multiple dwelling zones to commercial manufacturing zone and a building line removal and thereby remove the existing surface parking lot and construct a new commercial office building. Property is situated in CD thirteen.
Excellent. Is there a report from Department of City Planning?
Yes, hi. Good afternoon, council members. Item nine involves a general plan amendment, zone change and building line removal in order to facilitate the development of a new three-story commercial office building within the Hollywood Community Plan located at seven one one North Lilian Way. The project involves the removal of an existing surface parking lot and the construction of a new three-story, fifty-six feet in height commercial office building with a floor area of thirty thousand three hundred eighty-five square feet. The proposed development will have two subterranean parking levels and ground-level parking that will contain a total of eighty-five vehicular parking stalls. The project had unanimous approval from the City Planning Commission at its meeting held on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. On May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, Council District Thirteen issued a letter of support to the proposed project. Staff recommends that the Plumb Committee approve the general plan amendment, zone change, and building line removal. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have comments from the applicant, Mr. Benjamin?
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Gary Benjamin of Alchemy Planning Land Use representing the applicant, Robert Herskew, for this proposed new media creative office development at seven eleven North Lilian Way, which is in the Hollywood Media District. The site is currently comprised of three lots in the R three zone, including a twenty-two space commercial parking lot and two vacant parcels, which were also previously permitted for parking uses. The site is surrounded by office uses in the CM zone to the west and the south, a grocery store to the east, and multifamily residential to the north. The office building is fairly modest in size. It's three stories with a rooftop penthouse space connecting to an outdoor open space area for the office users with just over thirty thousand square feet and the owner intends to lease it to a single-tenant media firm. The project represents a substantial improvement over the current site conditions and will be a positive addition to the neighborhood and to the local media and entertainment industry. The architects for the project have put a lot of care into the design, utilizing high-quality materials, including substantial storefront glass features and balconies, helping to connect the use with the surrounding community. As mentioned by the planner, the City Planning Commission did support the project unanimously with the related general plan amendment, zone change, and building line removal request, requesting only that we add car share spaces, which we were happy to accommodate. Our only requested amendment to the standard conditions provided in the staff report include a modification to the roadway improvement conditions to require the repair and replacement of the curb and sidewalk while maintaining the existing roadway dimensions rather than widening the roadway as this is a local street and the widening would have minimal, if any, mobility benefit and a wider sidewalk with consistent curb line would be a more desirable outcome for the community. Council District Thirteen spoke earlier in support of this requested modification. So, we hope that you will support this request to allow the project to move forward and to contribute to the further development of Hollywood as the center of the entertainment industry. With that, I am available for any questions, but those are my comments at this time. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Benjamin. Do we have any comments from Council District Thirteen on this item?
Craig Bullock with Council District Thirteen. We're supportive of the requested actions with the modified T conditions, which we've had uploaded to the council file and I echoed earlier in my attempt to verbally convey them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, I'll move the item as amendment amended. Mr. Mahia, if there's a second, can you read the instructions and call a roll?
Yes, I will read the recommendation as to approve the environmental clearance, the negative deck and the general plan amendment resolution, the zone change ordinance, the building line removal, and the modified T conditions for public improvements as noted in the letter dated May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two submitted by Council District Thirteen and uploaded to the file and stated on the record at today's meeting by CD thirteen, Mr. Craig Bullock, and by the city planner, Mr. Trevor Martin. I will call the roll. Councilmember Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Councilmember Sevillas Absinthe, councilmember Bob Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Councilmember John Lee.
Aye.
And councilwoman Monica Rodriguez.
Aye.
That's four members and unanimous, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you so much. That takes us to item number ten.
Item ten, this is a negative declaration and a report from the Planning Commission. Sorry, and a report from the Planning Commission recommending approval of the proposed ordinance to amend the Westwood Village specific plan and the Westwood Community Design Review specific plan and to rescind the Director of Planning's two thousand and two interpretation of restaurant, fast-food establishment, and other food establishments of the Westwood Village specific plan inasmuch as the proposed ordinance will amend these existing definitions.
Excellent. We have a report from Department of City Planning?
Yeah. Good afternoon. This is Jeff Cow, City Planning. Item number ten is an ordinance to amend the Westwood Village specific plan and the Westwood Community Design Review Board specific plan. It also rescinds Director's Interpretation DIR two thousand two dash five seven three zero dash DI. Here's a map of the Westwood Village Plan Area along with the goals of the specific plan, which evolved to encourage a mix of uses, establishing a vibrant retail center, store preservation, and encouraging pedestrian activity. However, you can see here on slide three that retail vacancies in Westwood have been increasing at an alarming rate. In fact, over the last five years, the rise in retail vacancies in Westwood has outpaced that of, that of the city at large. Members of the local community have expressed concern about the future of Westwood, citing the proliferation of empty storefronts and deserted sidewalks in an area that was once a vibrant shopping district. And to that end, the city council introduced a motion to institute land use policies to address this economic downturn. In response to this motion, planning staff drafted an ordinance following goals in mind. First, we wanted to promote business-friendly environment that's going to help Westwood become more responsive to changing market trends and consumer demands. Second, we wanted to update the specific plan to keep up with citywide mobility goals. And lastly, we wanted to support business community by facilitating faster permit reviews through a streamlined process. The ordinance calls for a number of amendments that fall under four main topics. First, introducing a new administrative review process for certain projects involving signage and change in use. Second, we're removing location restrictions for food-related, food-related uses. Third, we're easing parking requirements. And fourth, we're adding clarification on signage review and what types of signs are allowed. This new administrative review process will shorten processing times for business owners applying for business permits and signs and changes of use. The importance of providing a faster turnaround time for signage and changes of use is noted as a major factor for small businesses hoping to establish themselves since the first few years of operation are critical to a business's long-term survival. According to data from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, approximately twenty percent of small businesses fail within the first year. By the end of the second year, thirty percent of businesses will have failed. By the end of the fifth year, about half will have failed. This new administrative review process will decrease the overall time and money spent by businesses during these first foundational years. And before I, before I move on, I wanted to emphasize that the proposed added review process is not replacing the existing discretionary review process, but rather supplementing it to make our permit process more efficient. The majority of projects we see today would not be eligible for administrative review and will continue to undergo existing review procedures. And this includes projects such as new construction, facade changes, additional entitlements, deviation requests, sign programs, and certificates of appropriateness. Here's a table that summarizes some major milestones for this project. We started this effort in two thousand nineteen. We're very close to the finish line. Staff has close, has worked very close with CD five staff in the development of this ordinance. And on February tenth of this year, it was unanimously approved by the City Planning Commission by a vote of seven to zero. And at the CPC hearing, staff from CD five spoke and supported the proposed amendment, although they have recently submitted a letter requesting a minor modification. And as currently written, the proposed amendment includes a provision for parking relief for projects involving a change of use. This relief would apply to the first five thousand square feet of floor area. Anything above that would need to be parked pursuant to today's parking requirements. Staff from CD five submitted a letter requesting that this threshold be increased from five thousand square feet to fifteen thousand square feet. The letter states that this change is necessary to reduce barriers to entry for new businesses. Planning staff is happy to make this modification if instructs, if instructs to do so by the members of this plumb committee. And as of today, we have received two hundred seventy-one letters that support the proposed ordinance and one letter in opposition. This concludes my presentation for item number ten. Myself and other planning staff are available to respond to any questions.
All right, thank you for the report. Congratulations to planning department and Council District eleven for bringing this to us. Is there any discussion among members or from Council District five on this item?
This is Dylan Zetig, Senior Planning Deputy for Councilmember Coretts. Thank you so much, Chair Harris Dawson, for the opportunity to speak. The specific plan amendments represent the hard work and collaboration of the neighborhood's many stakeholders, our office and planning staff, and will really help to realize the potential of Westwood Village while addressing the chronic retail vacancy issue. Council District Five is committed to ensuring that the businesses in this community are given an opportunity to thrive. The council member supports all the proposed amendments and, as summarized by staff, the one modification to increase the parking exemption threshold for changes of use. This change is necessary to reduce the barriers of entry for new businesses. Regarding the review of signs, the council member supports the planning department's proposed administrative sign review procedures and wants to ensure that all new signs are of the high quality expected within Westwood. The sign review will become an administrative process. Planning staff will, as a matter of policy, provide notice to the designer review board members and neighborhood councils as a courtesy when administrative sign applications are submitted. They will have the opportunity to flag compliance issues if they so choose. This, along with planning staff's careful review, will ensure that the quality of signs in Westwood continues to be exemplary. These reviews will not be over-the-counter reviews, but will be assigned to the Westwood planner. Councilmember Coretts would like to thank the designer review board members for their work and all that they've done for signs in Westwood over the past years. And he wants to emphasize that these changes are promoting efficiency and cost effectiveness for the city. Do not have to do with appeals. Once adopted, the proposed amendments will open the next chapter for Westwood Village and Councilmember Coretts urges an aye vote from you today. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Any other comments from members on this item? Mr. Lee, I think they're bringing back all the nightclubs you used to go to in the early nineties in Westwood Village. If there's no other comments, I'll move the item and request a second, Mr. Mahia.
Yes, so the recommendation to request city attorney to prepare and present the ordinance to amend the Westwood Village specific plan stated by the city planner at today's meeting and two, to request the city attorney to include the requested ordinance language to amend the parking exemption into increase the, for changes of use to fifteen thousand square feet as stated on the record by the city planner at today's meeting and by CD five. I will call the roll. Councilmember Marquise Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Councilmember Sevillas Absinthe, councilmember Bob Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Councilmember John Lee.
Aye.
And councilwoman Monica Rodriguez.
Aye.
That's four members and unanimous. It carries, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mahia. That takes us to item number eleven.
Item eleven, this is a categorical exemption from SEQA and the related findings communication from the West Los Angeles Area Planning Commission relative to its determination to deny the appeal by the Yeshiva University Los Angeles Boys High School and thereby sustaining the zoning administrator's determination, which denied the zone variance request for onsite wall and monument signs for the property at nine seven six zero West Pico Boulevard. This item is before your committee's consideration via a, a motion by councilmember Coretts, seconded by councilmember Harris Dawson, charges section two forty-five motion asserting jurisdiction.
Thank you so much. Do we have comments or a report from the Department of City Planning?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. So, my name is Theodore Irving and thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. So, I'm the decision maker on record for this item before you. Again, this is a project for a sign program at a high school. The project involves twelve signs. Initially involved fourteen signs. And to go along with that project, the applicant sought his own variance request. So, the property is located in the West Los Angeles Community Plan Area with a neighborhood commercial land use designation and a low residential land use designation. So, in addition to having two, a split, a split land use designation, the site also has split zoning. The C four zone portion of the property is located along Pico Boulevard. The R one V two dash O portion of the property is located south along Costello Avenue. And the West Los Angeles Community Plan was last updated in nineteen ninety-nine and a community plan is currently in the process of being updated. Now, the surrounding properties are characterized by similar topography and they're improved with streets and developed with a variety of neighborhood and institutional-serving uses. The property directly to the west of this subject property is a similarly split zone, split designated property. It is the Museum of Tolerance. The property to the north, on the north side of Pico Boulevard, it's Zone C four and it's improved with medical offices, a market, and multifamily residential building. Properties to the east of Costello Avenue are Zone C four and are one dash, R one V O, I'm sorry, R one, V two dash O. And the property adjoining to the south boundary And the property adjoining to the south boundary of this project site is a residentially zoned site, and it is Zone R1-V2-0. So the property, the subject property consists of a typical rectangular shape lot. It is 59,000 square foot in size. It is located at southwest corner of Pico and Costello Avenue. Okay, it has approximately 153 feet of frontage along Pico. It has a 317-foot frontage along Costello Avenue. So that's a deep lot. The site is improved with three buildings that comprise of the Ula University's high school for boys. The conditional use that was granted this operation was CPC 2009 1049, VCU ZBPAD. It authorized the use of this school. Their approval, that conditional use approval, why it approved the operation for the educational religious program, it did not authorize any signage installation. And so there were a number of conditions imposed in connection with that approval. But the only reference to signage was condition number 42. And that condition number 42 basically says signage on the subject property shall be of a conservative identification or directional type. The design and location of which shall be submitted and approved for approval by the Planning Department with consultation with the council office. So it's simply a condition of the grant. It was not a grant. Was not any sort of deviation allowed in that action by the City Planning Commission. So initially, the applicant was preparing, I'm sorry, initially, the applicant was seeking to install 14 signs, as I stated at the outset, for the dual-zone campus. And as such, was preparing an onsite program for wayfinding and identification for just the three buildings. The municipal code has some limitations on the amount of signage for users permitted in our zone and for users permitted in the commercial zone. And it also restricts the placement of some signage. So in response to that, the applicant filed for zone variance to get permission to deviate from the municipal code to allow for the onsite signage program. Again, 14 signs were initially proposed with two signs located in the commercial zone portion of the site, and they were allowed by right. But 12 signs were located in the remaining area of the site, the R1 portion of the site. So that was part of the application initially. That application was submitted to the Planning Department in September 2019. We held a hearing in December 2019. And at the public hearing, there were about 25 homeowners and other residents who spoke at the hearing. The matter was taken under advisement by this zone administrator. And in May of 2020, I issued a determination to deny the zone variance request for those 14 signs. Immediately thereafter, the applicant filed for an appeal of my zone administrator's determination. That appeal was presented to the Area Planning Commission on September 20th. Just prior to that hearing, the applicant submitted some revisions to the project. And before the APC could make a determination on the matter, a couple of other errors were discovered with regard to the project. One of the planning commission discovered that there was some irregularity with regard to the zone boundaries, the C4 and R1 boundaries. And then also recognized that the applicant was making some adjustment in their sign program. So at that time, the APC decided not to take an action, but rather remand the matter to the zone administrator. And so the matter was worked back to the zone administrator again. And it incorporated, the applicant at that time formally incorporated the changes to the sign program, changing a number of signs on the program, removing two, relocating one, okay? And also recognizing that the zone boundary correction had to be made. So after the applicant submitted a revised program, we conducted another public hearing, May of 2021. Again, we had taken testimony on that matter, okay? And so while there were some changes, and these changes were noteworthy, the facts, for the most part, remained the same for this zone administrator. They still couldn't make the findings to support the variance, the required variance findings. And because I could not make the findings, I again denied the project, again, because I could not support the findings. And in summary, what it was, that there were really no special circumstances with rated to the applicant's request. The applicant said that there was a large site against dual zoning. I didn't find that to be unique in the area. In this area, there are a number of dual-zone properties in this area, as I stated earlier. Adjacent to this site on the west is the Museum of Tolerance. That particular property has dual zoning. That particular property complies with the code provision with regard to the amount of signing. Down the street to the east is a hotel. It's located in a dual zoning situation, configuration. That's, again, speaks to the site not being unusual. And so I couldn't find any special circumstance with regards to the site and its dual zoning. With regard to practical difficulties that the applicant stated in his application that this is a school and it's a large site and it should have the signage. I didn't see that to be a difficult thing. Again, there are only three buildings on the site. Two of the buildings are in the residential zone, and those two buildings could accommodate 30 square feet of signage easily so that people can make their way, whether we talk about law enforcement or emergency, whether we talk about visitors. That's enough signage to put on two buildings in our one zone. Again, there were only three buildings on the site. The applicant talked about some other situations there. He didn't probably, again, didn't probably provide any evidence that there were similar properties in this area with dual zones that needed to have additional signing. This is just a request, and as you heard earlier, people just want to put signage there. And their claim is that it's not harmful to anybody because you cannot see the sign. But I have to go by the findings that have to be made, and I could not make the findings to support it. The applicant did, however, provide one example to support his argument. That particular example was outside of the vicinity of the project area. It was located in the valley. The example was the Motion Picture Academy Retirement Home. Again, that's in another part of the city. It's not in the same zoning and vicinity of the subject project. So I had to reject that as evidence to support his request. In terms of being materially detrimental and injurious to other properties in the area, somebody would ask what kind of injury would occur. So a zone variance approval would be very dangerous and very injurious to what the community has been trying to do with this dual zoning of this site. So the dual zoning is a planning tool that helps buffer high-intensity uses from low-intensity uses. Typically, if you have a commercial establishments along a major boulevard, you typically have some multifamily uses in between that commercial establishment and a single-family home. In this instance, you did not have that. And because you did not have those uses that buffer the single-family zones from the high-intensity commercial zone, what was used as a strategy to provide some relief for the community was this dual zoning. So granting a zone variance would undermine this strategy to provide some sort of protection to the community. So while there is some discussion that you can barely see a sign, you can only see one sign, that sort of thing. That's not the injury that we have here. What we have is the injury to the zoning code and undermining of the strategy that the community had voted in when they adopted the plan in 1990 to protect this community. And so that's there. So that essentially is the findings that I could not make. I asked that this permission of this committee reject the 245 that's provided by your colleague, uphold a decision that was made by the zone administrator and further supported by the West Los Angeles Area Planning Commission. So that concludes my remark, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your remarks, Mr. Irvin. Now we'll hear from Mr. Bowman. Three minutes.
Mr. Bowman, please press star six to unmute yourself. Mr. Bowman, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, terrific. Thank you, and good afternoon, everyone. My name is John Bowman. I represent Ula, the applicant and the appellant in this case. The subject property has been used by Ula as a private high school and related uses for over 40 years. The application before you today concerns Ula's desire to install conservative, non-illuminated identification signs on the existing Ula campus, consistent with the conditional use permit that was granted by the City Council in 2012. Due to the property's split zoning and other special circumstances applicable to the site, nine of the 12 proposed signs require variances. Of these nine signs, eight will be installed within the courtyard area of the Ula campus and will not be visible from the surrounding residential neighborhood. The only sign that requires a variance that would be visible from outside the campus is a conservative, non-illuminated sign that's needed to identify the primary entrance to the Ula campus on Costello Avenue. Ula has, in good faith, worked with its residential neighbors in an effort to address their concerns and has made substantial concessions, including the elimination of two signs that would have been visible from neighboring residences and also the relocation of another sign to make sure that it would not be visible from outside the campus. Ula's proposed sign program has substantial support from the community, as evidenced by the 25 area residents who spoke in support of the application during the original public hearing in this matter, the 21 letters of support that were submitted during that hearing, the 14 or so people who spoke today in strong support of Ula's application. And not to mention, by the way, the 15 or so other folks who I understand called in, but did not get an opportunity to express their support because of the time limits. The only person who you heard in opposition to the application, who, by the way, called in and spoke twice, claims to represent some 52 people, but in our view, really represents a community of one. She appears to have issues with Ula and the city that really have nothing to do with signs. She's advanced baseless accusations and hyper-technical arguments concerning the required variances. I'm sorry, the required findings for the variance. In our letter to the committee dated May 19, we did present proposed findings that more than adequately support the granting of a variance in this case. We urge the committee to recommend that the City Council adopt these proposed findings, reverse the zoning administrator's decision, and grant the requested variances. I would add that Ula does not object to the conditions of approval that were proposed by Councilmember Coretts in his May 11 letter. However, as we noted in our May 13 letter to the Plum Committee, there were some errors in proposed condition number 7A. Therefore, we would urge the committee
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. That's your time.
of the conditions of approval contained in the Councilman's May 11 letter with the revised language.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Do we have comments from Council District 5?
Yes, we do. Thank you. I'm Dylan Satig, Senior Planning Deputy for Councilmember Coretts. Thank you, committee members, for hearing this item today and for your careful consideration, and thank you, staff, for the presentation. Over the three and a half years that this case has been pending, Ula has listened to community concerns and made many modifications to their proposal. These modifications represent a reasonable compromise with the community. Such modifications include removing two of the most public-facing signs from their proposal, making more minor adjustments to multiple other signs, and resulting in five of the six signs on the R1 zone portion of the lot not being visible from the public right-of-way. However, the council member believes that these modifications and the existing site conditions have not been properly considered throughout the process. As detailed in Councilmember Coretts's letter that was submitted to the file and as supplemented by the May 19, 2022 letter submitted by the applicant, there is evidence in the record to support all five of the required findings for zone variances and to support the appeal. The imposition of all the standards of the sign code would create practical difficulties as it relates to adding the requested informational and directional signs which are necessary for students, visitors, employees, and emergency personnel. The site involves special circumstances that do not apply to other sites in the vicinity, and the granting of the variance will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare. The recommended conditions of approval can be found in Councilmember Coretts's letter dated May 11, 2022, as supplemented by the letter submitted by the applicant and their communication dated May 13, 2022. The variance process was created exactly to respond to situations like this where the strict application of the zoning code would result in practical difficulties for beloved and important institutions, institutions that we all want to allow to continue to thrive. The council member urges your approval of the appeal. Thank you so much for your time.
All right. Do we have any other comments from other members of the committee, the council? Questions? All right, I will move this appeal, that we grant this appeal with specific instructions, Mr. Mejia. There's a second. If you could read those into the record and call the row.
I will. The recommendation is to grant the appeal filed by Yeshiva University Los Angeles Boys High School and thereby overturn the West Los Angeles Area Planning Commission determination which denied the zone variance request pursuant to City Charter section 562 and Municipal Code section 1227 for 12 onsite wall monument signs for the property located at 9760 West Pico Boulevard within the West Los Angeles Community Plan and approve the additional conditions and findings for the project which have been uploaded to the council file by Council District 5 in its communication dated May 11, 2022, and which are, in addition to any findings submitted by the applicant in support of the project and as stated by Council District 5, Mr. Dylan City at today's meeting. I will call the row. Councilmember Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Councilmember Sadio's absent. Councilmember Bob Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Councilmember John Lee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez.
Aye.
And that's four members in unanimous. It carries, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mejia and members. All right, so we've got to resolve item number eight, which we opened for discussion, and wanted to hear from Mr. Wheatley in particular. So I believe at this time we'll reconsider, or we'll consider item number eight and hear from Mr. Wheatley. And then again, from Mr. Ballistin, he's for three minutes on this item. Mr. Wheatley, are you on the line?
Yes, I am on the line. Thank you. I am on the line. Thank you very much.
You have two minutes and 59 seconds.
All right, I'll try to make the most of them. Thank you very much. Thank you to the City Attorney for holding space for me so I could get on with the right number. I'm the appellant in this case. My name is David Wheatley, W-H-E-A-T-L-E-Y. I've sent in some written materials that I hope each of you have had a chance to review. I think it's important. I'll tell you what I think is important. I think it's important that each person on a commissioner advisory board reach an independent conclusion based on their independent investigation and not rely on other organizations such as CPC, staff reports, or any other groups, or even what the applicant is saying for that matter. This project is way out of scale. This is a CEQA appeal, so I'll keep it to that. The class 32 exemption, the burden is on the applicant to prove that this exemption applies, that this exemption applies, and they have not done so. There's not been sufficient studies done of the cumulative impact, cumulative impact of this project or twenty or thirty other projects. They do not reference those. Uh, they need to do that. As far as the noise study, they did a report, but they did not do a study. They say that the noise, the people affected will be many tens of feet away, was actually a single-digit feet away. This needs to be redone. Also, the part about that it's miscategorized. They're asking for a permit to build forty apport, apartments, but it's actually a hundred and ninety-four or a hundred and ninety-five single leased units, and it's designed to do that. This has more bedrooms than like, uh, you know, the Palace of Versailles. You'd think Louis XIV was, yeah, applicant here. So that needs to be changed. If it's going to be, ideally, it's sent back, and they should do a whole new project and start over. If that's not possible because they've come so far, uh, may I request that there be, uh, restrictions put on the project, that there will be no, uh, leasing of individual bedrooms, that it will only be, uh, apartments to one less e, and that this, uh, project be constrained. Also, the JJJ was never really properly implemented in its detail at the City Council level, which is the executive function of the city, and that needs to be done. Maybe council is too busy, didn't think they had to do it, but I think they do. The other part is, I see the City Council in Plum being C-suite, executive in charge of all the other departments, and the other departments like Building and Safety, they're not ready to do this kind of work, and until that's the case, uh, this project needs to be put on hold or sent back. Thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. Belliston, if you have anything further?
Yeah, thank you. This is Aaron Belliston, representative for the project. I would just like to state that the noise study was prepared by York Engineering, dated September three, twenty twenty, and is an exhibit to the, uh, case. The project description is accurate. This is a forty-unit apartment building. There, uh, are multiple assertions about individual bedroom counts, which bear no resemblance to the municipal code, as was determined by the planners and the City Planning Commission. And, um, finally, this is a CEQA matter, so any complaints regarding JJJ or TOC are not relevant in, in this conversation here. And, uh, the appelleing continues to, uh, miss providing any substantial evidence regarding noise and/or cumulative impacts. Thank you so much for the consideration.
Uh, thank you, and just for good measure, uh, we'll follow on Council District Thirteen again.
Good afternoon. This is Craig Bullock with Council District Thirteen. After listening to the appellant's arguments, we still concur that the appeal should be denied based on the reasons provided by the City Planning Department. Thank you.
All right, the chair moves that we deny the appeal. Uh, if there's a second, Mr. Mejia, can you read the specific instructions into the record and call the row?
Uh, yes, uh, for item eight, deny the appeal filed by David Wheatley, North Commonwealth United Neighborhood Association, and thereby sustain the planning commission's approval of the environmental clearance, a categorical exemption from CEQA for the construction of a six-story, forty-unit residential building, four units set aside for extremely low-income households for the property located at five zero five through five one seven North Hoover Street, and as stated on the, for the record at today's meeting by the City Planner and by CD thirteen, Mr. Craig Bullock. I will call the row. Councilmember Marquise Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert Sedio absent, Councilmember Bob Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Councilmember John Lee.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez.
Aye.
That's, uh, four members, and it carries unanimously, council.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Mejia. Uh, can you confirm that that concludes our, uh, scheduled business for today?
It does, sir. It concludes our, all our items.
Excellent. Thank you so much, uh, to the members of the committee, to staff, uh, City Attorney's Office, City Clerk's, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.